Okay, we'll get the meeting started. I apologize for the delay. Can we get our motion to adopt the agenda? Is there a second there? Sheila won't be here until 5:30. Just to adopt the agenda, John, do you want to?
Don't move.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so we're now at Board Action and Direction to Staff on our report, our first interim report to the county in mid-December. Superintendent Koba?
Thank you, President Brera. What I'd like to do is provide some context for tonight. The purpose of tonight's special meeting is to seek Board approval of deficit solutions, a plan that will accompany the first interim financial report that must be sent to the County Office of Education. This plan must be transmitted no later than the 16th of December, about four weeks from today. Board direction and approval is sought tonight with a great sensitivity to the workload planning that's necessary. Following Board action tonight, the Chief Financial Officer and his team must immediately initiate the processes and the associated complex analysis to build a first interim report and the accompanying multi-year projections. And they'll be based on the deficit strategy and do all of that within the next month. To provide some historical background for why we're here and why the decision tonight, this past June, the Board did adopt a 2010-11 budget, again, for about the 23rd or 4th time in the last 26 years in the absence of a state budget. And a part of the adopted budget package was the requirement that we also submit a deficit strategy to budget, or to balance the future years. Concurrently, at about the same time, we had to accommodate an 11th-hour decision from the California Department of Education that removed $18 million from our budget, split between 2009-10, the year as we were closing in June, and also the current year-end 2010-11 from our special education resources. While we eventually had all of that funding restored, it happened during the summer months, time of uncertainty, and the County Office of Education deemed our adopted budget as conditional in the absence of the $18 million, which had to be covered from our reserves, our authorized 2 percent reserve for economic uncertainty. The County Office requested a resolution from the Board committing to balancing our budgets, all future budgets, and to have a supporting deficit strategy along with that package. Most recently, on the 7th of September, the Board, in fact, approved a resolution, an agreement to submit that deficit strategy as part of the first interim report. So basically, about six and a half weeks ago, we had the resolution. We said we were headed towards December and that we would have our deficit strategy. And part and parcel over the last few reporting cycles, we've had to affirm or resolve to commit to a deficit strategy. And tonight, we're essentially closing the loop from the September 7th resolution. And it must be acknowledged that we are completing the first interim cycle with dated information, what I would say is truly outdated information, because it's tied to legislative and gubernatorial actions between May and September. The budget assumptions and the deficit strategy will be replaced very shortly with the change of administrations. When Governor Brown's proposed 2011-12 budget is developed within the next 40 to 60 days, all bets are off with regards to the strategies and the assumptions that the Board has to consider tonight. Compliance, though, with the existing fiscal reporting cycle necessitates the Board's actions tonight's. Despite the near-term anticipated change, the state and the county agencies expect our action. We'll then turn around at the beginning of the calendar year to craft a new and update existing strategies and start anew. The Board's work tonight does not equate to any final actions associated with the 11-12 budget. We are simply meeting fiscal reporting requirements and validating our commitments to fiscal stewardship. The CFO, Cabinet, and various central office and Cabinet teams, campus teams, have been meeting frequently to refine the deficit strategy. I'm going to turn it over to Ron Little here shortly, our new CFO, to present the updated strategy. We are seeking your approval of the entire strategy to optimize the flexibility we need to accommodate whatever Governor Brown's new budget looks like. And it is clear that there will be intense assessment, adjustment, and discussion that will really start with that budget and ultimately lead to enduring and difficult Board decisions tied to the 11-12 budget. But that will not occur tonight. That will occur in the new calendar year. So I'm asking the Board to take action tonight with an understanding that this is only the most recent round of interim report submissions to the county. More to follow in January.
Okay.
And what I'll do now, if you're prepared, President Brera, to go turn it over to the CFO.
Yep.
Thank you, Superintendent Koba, for those introductory remarks. Good evening, Board members. I think it's worth repeating that three statutory requirements drive tonight's meeting. As Superintendent Koba mentioned, we're bound by regulations to submit a first interim report, which is a good budget check-in to the county by December 16th. Within that report, we also must certify that we are able to meet our financial obligations for the current year and to subsequent years to receive a positive certification. And of course, the MOU/resolution that Bill, Mr. Koba referenced earlier, our agreement with the county in terms of commitments moving forward. So what we hope to do tonight is just review the current fiscal realities, many of which Superintendent Koba touched upon. We'll review a revised and streamlined solutions list, which I'll describe a little bit later as to the changes that have happened since last Friday, and then seek Board action and direction and provide a timeline as required by the resolution and the agreement with the county with respect to those implementations. So in terms of the fiscal realities, we have three primary happenings since last we met. As you know, when I was here in October for my first meeting, I reported that the state's budget was founded upon some very optimistic assumptions on the revenue side. There were a lot of one-time fixes and patches to the fiscal budget gap that it found itself in, and that really the state continues in its usual methodologies with solving, you know, all of our challenging state budgets moving forward. This has been borne out by the LAO Committee, a report that came out last week. I think that we've all read that. We all know that the current year deficit is about, well, $6 billion worse than what we thought it was in the current year, and that the LAO is saying that there's a structural deficit, that's an ongoing deficit in the state budget, at least through 2015, 2016 of $20 billion. So if you read the report, LAO is really encouraging the state to do what we're doing here tonight, to take a long, hard look at our multi-year projections and implement some multi-year solutions to a persistent budget gap. Obviously, the state problems are our problems because most of our funding comes from the state. And unlike the state, we don't have the luxury of offering unbalanced and over-optimistic budgets. So we're all aware of the challenges. I won't go through this list. I would say that I would highlight the unified leadership is critical. Yesterday, we had a very productive and constructive and candid meeting with Cabinet and some representative principals to talk about site-based budget decisions and budget reductions, which we'll get into a little bit later. We plan to continue those discussions. They went on today with the area superintendents and their principals, and we're going to be reconvening on Friday to continue the discussions. We know that we have a limited amount of time, which you'll see on the timeline. We know that now we're at the point where the decisions that the Board makes will impact students in the classroom, unfortunately, and that's the very difficult reality that we find ourselves in. And of course, as we know, as we just alluded to with the state, the decisions we make now are going to affect our future fiscal stability. So to put those off is, you know, certainly a fiscal risk in the true sense of the word. In terms of a timeline, I don't know if you can see this, but this is the accelerated timeline that we're working with, again, driven by statutory and contractual obligations. So the approval of the list tonight will give us a pool, a pool of solutions to work with and consider and really to refine over the next 45 to 60 days with respect to which are the most, well, which we will need to close the gap once we know more from the new governor in January. We hope to get out to the sites by mid-January. Their projected allocations, those may or may not change, and ask the principals and the area superintendents to start thinking about their side of the reductions in the very near term, and we'll get into that a little bit more. Again, these are key assumptions. You've seen these before, I believe, at the November 4th meeting. So our baseline deficit, as we went into this year, was about $141.6 million. We're assuming that all of the federal jobs bill money that we receive will be applied to offset the deficit. That's about $21 million. So we're looking at about $121 million deficit still to close. There are, as Superintendent Koba mentioned, many variables still on the horizon that we see being settled, for lack of a better word, in the next 45 to 60 days. So the state budget obviously is a big one. Whether or not schools will see the increase that was implemented a couple months ago, will it be taken away with mid-year reductions? Will we receive the federal funding, the SFSF money, the mandated cost reimbursement that the state promised? And of course, as we close out our first interim report, we're determining where we're finishing that fiscal period through October 31st for the current year with respect to the savings that we were hoping to achieve. So if we've achieved the savings that we built into this year's budget, that will impact our line, our bottom line to the positive. If we're not on track, that will adversely affect our budget gap. I mentioned the site-based reductions and that we've begun that conversation with principals and area superintendents and Cabinet. And you'll note that part of the change and the revision for tonight's spreadsheet had to do with the site-based decisions. And what we heard loud and clear, I believe, yesterday was that there was no one-size-fits-all solution in terms of looking at site-based reductions, given the level that may be necessary. We heard that flexibility was key. We heard that having local input was important. So we have since redistributed many of the line items around that spreadsheet to fall under the site-based reductions to give them a little bit more flexibility in terms of the options that they can choose from. So the reason that tonight we're looking at $146 million as opposed to $167 million is that that $20 million has come off of the site-based reduction anticipation and is now just built into the flexibility that the sites have to work with. We also wanted to balance, you know, how much is a large enough pool to work with, given the fiscal unknowns, versus being, you know, too unrealistic and too alarmist. So we felt that the $146 figure was more in line with where we're going. We also have the challenge of, with the flexibility at the site level, obviously, is district standards and base level of services. So we begun the conversation and are including the principals and the area superintendents with respect to developing some guidelines and some parameters around how sites make the reductions and think about the reductions and consider the reductions necessary as we move forward. And again, this level is, you know, kind of best guess, worst-case scenario at this point. So the $45 million figure will certainly change by the time we get into mid-December and again in mid-January. We've also included the central office reductions, very similar in the sense that we need to establish some parameters around how those reductions are going to be made. We need to look at the consolidation of departments. That takes time. So that's why, as Superintendent Koba mentioned, we want, we would ask that the Board approve the entire list so that we can continue to work on those ideas and those solutions that need more time to vet and refine. And this is one of them, obviously. We really need to consider what resources at the central office are most utilized to support schools and how can we work to retain those and minimize the reductions of those. Those are some difficult decisions that we'll have to have, again, at the Cabinet level and fairly quickly. Given the timeline, we need to identify most of our reductions by mid-January, certainly by early February. I don't think that I will go through this entire list. Nothing on, let me put it this way, everything on the November 4th list is on this list with the exception of a few minor changes, which I'd be happy to mention. We reduced the ADA revenue by half, just assuming that that's probably a more realistic revenue projection. So instead of increasing a $5.8 million increase in revenue, we're looking at about a $2.9 million increase in revenue. We pulled out the Science Kits line item. We eliminated the small school, eliminating the small school model. We took that out because there were some other ways that we felt that could be addressed. And I believe that we reduced a reduction in the gate administration and oversight by half. So we reduced the reduction by half. So that brought us to our current spreadsheet. And again, I would just remind the Board that the numbers in the far-right corner, the far-right column are the page numbers in the budget briefing books that reference each of these that really have a decent and well-thought-out, comprehensive impact statement as well as the fiscal implications and the staffing implications. We also continue to, part of the work that we're going to do over the next 45 to 60 days is vet these numbers again with the subject expert, subject matter experts, as well as our financial analysts, to make sure that these numbers are as tight as they can be. Because once, when we get to the point where we'll have to implement decisions, we want to make sure that all the math and the numbers are correct. Again, all that's new on this, on this part of the spreadsheet is the school-based reduction decisions that we talked about. So those, we list some options for the sites to consider in making the reductions, and that's all that, those are just recommendations, short of having guidelines at this point, which we hope to get out in the next three or four weeks, I believe. And I don't believe that there's anything new on this list. Again, obviously, one area that would need to be vetted out is H1. You know, how do we reduce special ed, again, by $5 million with respect to programming and still serve the needs of those students? So in total, I would say we're looking at, again, $146 million worth of solutions, which we will continue to refine, which we will bring back to the Board again in January, which we want the sites to start thinking about, the central office to begin considering and make some decisions very shortly in the new year. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So I just want to clarify, basically, what we have to do tonight in terms of approving this initial report, this seems, the state has put us in a situation where they're saying by December 15th, we have to submit a budget before they've given us a budget. So before telling us how much money they're going to give us, we have to come up with a budget, which is basically the worst-case scenario, right?
Yes. We have to, we have to look a year ahead without having the advantage of knowing what those numbers look like.
And we'll have to revisit this in January.
Correct.
And it could be better and it could be worse.
That's correct.
We revisit it again and again and again and again.
Until June.
Until June, until we submit a final budget.
Right.
Or not anymore.
We will continue to revisit it. Unfortunately, some of the budget decisions have associated milestones and, you know, statutory regulations. So to implement staff reductions on the certificated side for next year, we have to make decisions part of March 15th, as you know.
And I just want to make it clear that, you know, you said earlier that this is based on economic data from, what, we go back to September?
This is.
Or even earlier, actually.
September, September, October, exactly.
Right? So, you know, I always, my favorite economic indicator is gas prices, because when gas prices go up, that means people are paying more taxes, and that's good for us. So drive around a lot, please. But we're not allowed to take any of those economic indicators like Alan Gin's numbers that come out of, you know, USD, his economic forecast and all that. We're not allowed to do any of that.
Exactly. We're really constrained by two subject matter experts. We're constrained by School Services of California, which is very conservative, as it should be. It's a public sector consultant and watchdog. And then we're constrained by the County Office of Ed, which also suggests what assumptions we should make.
We also have a new governor coming in who has a different point of view, but he's also got maybe a more realistic evaluation of what we've been working with the LAO.
Could be.
So that it might be better for education, but it might be worse.
He may reprioritize.
Can't account for any of that.
Exactly.
Great, okay. In other words, nothing's changed in my eight years on the Board, so.
Okay. Well, it's crunch time now. We could have prevented some of this, but the Board was unwilling in the past to discuss how, and they decided they knew best. So now the compounding of over expenditures during the last few years and the program cuts that we are going to have to face because we painted ourselves into a corner leave us less to do now than we could have done a year ago. If we had bit the bullet and done some of the things, not all of them, but some of the things that the Board took off the table completely, we would have rolled over savings that would have been, this cuts this year in a smaller amount. Now we look at this list of unacceptable cuts, but they're real. So here's what I predict, because I'm not going to be here on the Board to deal with it, but I am going to be watching. Kids are going to lose, flat out. Gates are going to be decimated. Class sizes are going to go up. Campus are going to become more dangerous. Magnets are going to close. Dropouts are going to increase and a lot more. SDA is going to lose dues and members. Dues and members. And the rest are going to get raises. That isn't a scenario that I will want to be around for. And I've got to say that there's a weight off my shoulders that I'm feeling already. We've lost the opportunity to save on this year's salaries, but it isn't too late for the coming years. If we reopened the contract and did it to save jobs by doing things like giving redeemable vouchers for pay cuts, we could have saved jobs and programs that we're now going to actually have to cut. If you don't do the cuts, then you might want to listen to Scott, my replacement, and get rid of cell phones and internet services so you can save the budget. But watch your backs in the next election, because you're hurting kids and protecting adults. This community does not forgive, and they do not forget. I made my own mistakes, but I stuck with them, and I think some of my ideas are worthwhile. In this budget go-round, I'm not going to be voting for cuts on any programs. I'm going to leave that to the victims of the election.
Okay, we've got several public speakers. I'm going to ask public speakers to limit their comments to two minutes because we do have a long list. Thank you, thank you, Ron. So I'll call up Mark McDaniel, Shelby Spillers, George Hosang, Francine Maxwell.
My name is Mark McDaniel. My address is 3036 Felton Street, San Diego, California, 92104. Members of the school board, thank you for letting me speak here tonight. I'm pleased to say San Diego is my city. I was born here, as was my father, my mother, and my two children. Since 1919, all of us have attended the schools in this city, so I believe there's no better person to stand here tonight and tell you, the members of the school board, that we, all of us, are in a war, a war to combat ignorance. This war, I'm sad to say, we're losing. We're losing because we have lost sight of our intended goal. That foremost goal is to educate the children of this city. As with any war, the only way it's won is by having a superior fighting force. If Iraq and Afghanistan has shown you anything, that fighting force is known as the United States infantry. I like to refer to them as the ground pounders. Essential to the end, they clear buildings one by one, ridding the threats that lurk within. Here in the city schools, you have the same. Your ground pounders are the counselors, the teachers, who fight their way through traffic every morning, show up at their designated mission sites and begin their daily battles, like professional soldiers who train for their battle. Your ground pounders have trained for theirs. With a true passion in their heart and a desire to help, each of them have secured their education. Most are masters prepared, who keep up with the latest information to abate ignorance. And now you want to get rid of the key group of trained ground pounders who create a winning environment for you. Should this happen, what's the next? The classroom aide, the resource personnel, I'm here to tell you that you're approaching this war with ignorance. Everybody's worried about the bottom line, and this is where you need to take a step back, back in time, as the case may be. When I was in grade school, the three Rs is what was taught to us. If you could not keep up, you repeated a grade. Now, today, we have individual educational plans for the kids. My daughter has an IEP. Just today, I attended her yearly IEP meeting regarding my daughter's academic performance, and I'm pleased to tell you, her grade point average is well above the norm. This did not just happen overnight. This is an event that has been three years in the making, from the counselors, resource team members, her teachers, who have found passion to teach and guide. These are your ground pounders.
Thanks, Mark. I'm going to have to ask you to wrap up.
You should be lucky that they work under you for the benefit of the children.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Shelby Spillers, George Hosang. And again, I've got to apologize, but I am going to need to limit comments to two minutes. Go ahead, Shelby.
Hi, my name is Shelby Spillers. I go to a school called Limburg-Sweizer. Anyways, at my old, I used to go to this school that I was bullied really bad, and by the time I was eight, I didn't want to live anymore. And if it weren't for counselors, I wouldn't be here right now, literally. And that goes for tons of kids in this district right now. And if you get rid of counselors, it's like taking away a best friend. And they do not, they're so, they'll become so depressed, they do not want to lead or participate in this society tomorrow. So might as well just change your mission statement right now. And I'm speaking this from the heart. And I'm not just some kid who's been helped by counselors, but I also have Asperger's. And just don't cut counselors, because that's the absolutely worst thing to do, because it's a tidal effect. Because if you get rid of counselors, you're getting rid of all these things. You're getting rid of kids who want to do stuff, who want to succeed. And it's just bad. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, Board members and Superintendent Koba. My name's George Hosang. My grandson goes to SCPA, and I live in the Kearney area. Thank you, Samir, for pointing me to the appendices in your awesome report. And a quick reading through it prompts me to ask, could we not sue the state for funds that have not been provided under Proposition 98 because we are now unable to comply with the requirements of the Williams legislation of 2004? I've also been trying to find out if the bus fee that some of us have to pay, in my case, $340, is tax deductible, and so far, I haven't been able to find out, either through the Sacramento Education Office, Senator Kehoe, anyone else. So is anyone here on the, on the Board?
Can we, Superintendent, follow through?
A source where I could find that out?
We'll get you soon.
Okay, thank you. And I'd also like to say, as far as SCPA is concerned, if busing is eliminated in its totality, 80% of the students at the 1,500, 1,600 at SCPA are bussed. So then you'll dump probably at least 1,000 on the three or four other high schools that have maybe one track that's equivalent to one of the many tracks that SCPA has. So for instance, would Kearney be able to accept another 300 or 400 students just like that? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, John. Thank you, John.
Hi, Katie Anderson. The Prop 98, before I forget, I communicated with Bernie Reinerson today. If we could launch a campaign the way we did for Prop J to hammer Governor to be Brown, to get this 98 stuff taken care of, I think that is promising. So I certainly will be encouraging my email bank to participate in reaching out. So I hand you a little funny, that's not so funny, about when you cut everybody, nobody's left to help steer the boat. Can't make strides without people. And in GATE, we are down, we're beyond the bone. We're cutting to the marrow, cut off the legs. We can't go any further. One of the propositions is to cut half of the psychologists. I'd like to know which one of you would like to volunteer your sub-district to not have testing anymore and not be identified, because if you cut any more of the psychologists, there will not be 13,000 kids tested for identification anymore. So it's just not doable, and it's an embarrassment to be considering this. I'd like to suggest that the community input be, the school community input be part of this, and by using central offices to get together with finance to talk about when you're going to do something like this, what that means at the school sites that the central offices are serving. You did that with the principals, and you listened to them, and I think it might be effective here as well. And then, Mr. DeBeck, I'm not going to have a lot more chances to poke fun at you, but as far as the seminar ratio, imagine your board with five Mr. DeBecks and just one of you, and now imagine it with nine Mr. DeBecks and just one of you. How much are you going to get done? You have a huge amount of creativity, you have a huge amount of historical knowledge, and it gets really difficult, and it gets difficult for all the John DeBecks, too. So raising the class size and seminar, and still the incorrect number in the math, is unconscionable as well.
Amazingly, I get along real well with myself.
Yeah.
I think that in defense of Mr. DeBeck, and Ms. Anderson as well, Mr. DeBeck has been seminar identified for the last several years, so it's a compliment, actually.
Hi, my name's Victoria Moreland. I'm a teacher, I'm a parent, I'm a community member since 1964. I've been going to San Diego Unified Schools since 1968, since preschool. I was around, Mr. DeBeck was around before me in 1954 as a teacher. I heard him on the news the other day, on the radio talk show. And I was around during the first year, my seventh grade year was the first year of mandatory desegregation. It was the first year at Hale Junior High where busing was first put into place. My speech was five minutes long, two different speeches, five minutes and 30 seconds. I timed them myself. In the fall of 1976 was when that mandatory desegregation was put into place. In the year of 1996, the law sunset, and it was no longer necessary to implement. I was on the DAC in 1998. That's how I know. The busing system, along with the changes, have put a tremendous impact on counseling system, on the nurses. All of these areas, going to and from, making home visits, has put a tremendous impact on both of these valuable resources. As a teacher, I'm expected to make changes with RTI, Response to Intervention, within six to eight weeks. Within those six to eight weeks, I am meeting with the counselor, I am meeting with the school psychologist, I am meeting with the nurse. They come in to do formal and informal observations on students, and then I respond to those changes in my classroom. I've been doing this now for almost 18 years. However, for six to eight years, some students have been riding the bus with no impact in their achievement level. That seems unconscionable. Thank you for your time. Please consider what we're doing with children.
Thank you. Okay, Linda Palmer, Patty McIntyre, Jeannie Fitzgerald, and Lorena Hodgens.
Good evening. My name is Patty McIntyre, and I am the principal of IHI Virtual Academy. My address is on file. I am speaking because it was stated at the November 4 budget planning meeting that it costs $20,000 per pupil for the IHI program. I would like to provide accurate information for the board. IHI currently serves 60 full-time students plus 500 dual enrollment students. The dual enrollment students take at least four classes at their school of residence plus one or two courses online through IHI. IHI is the only school in the district that serves both full-time and part-time students, which needs to be considered when computing per pupil cost. The handout shows that we serve the equivalent of approximately 227 full-time students, which works out to approximately $3,500 per pupil. This is comparable to, if not below, the cost for other district high schools. The handout shows that approximately 44% of full-time IHI students came from schools outside the district. Many came from charter or private schools, or came back to the district after attending other schools. 10% of our full-time students have inter-district transfers. While we do not solicit students from other districts, many students discover IHI while researching other options in the competitive market for online learning. IHI is the most cost-effective model for providing online courses throughout the district. The master schedule for IHI looks very different than that of a traditional high school. We can offer both quarter and semester versions simultaneously for a range of courses within a given subject area. We can offer Part II of a course in the fall, or Part I in the spring. Almost all IHI teachers are credentialed in two subject areas and have extensive training and effective online teaching and learning strategies. It would be difficult to match this versatility within a traditional master schedule. IHI teachers also provide mentoring counselor training for over 20 dual enrollment schools across the district to help ensure student and staff success with online courses. In summary, IHI is extremely cost-effective for providing rigorous WASC-accredited, UC-approved online learning options for students across the district. Please support us in continuing this valuable program.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening. I'm Jeannie Fitzgerald, and I'm here to let you folks know that IHI is important to the students there, and to us parent types that send our teens to IHI. It is the school of the future, and it should be held up as a working model for all schools, or all high schools across our great nation. And I hope you guys keep it on the agenda and you support it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
After Lorena Hodgens, I'll call up Joellen Archer, Laura DeBell, and Diane McSweeney.
Hello, good evening. My name is Lorena Hodgens. Thank you for pronouncing my name correctly. I live at 8252 Hudson Drive, and I'm a resident of San Diego. Pardon me for having my eye closed, but I have a migraine. However, I am very passionate about the IHI Virtual Academy. I've been with them since 2008 at the beginning of the inception of the program, when it was a pilot program. I did make a speech, I wrote it down, but I figure, why? I'm just going to wing it. Okay, so the first pointers, there's three things I'm going to touch on, and pretty much Ms. McIntyre, my principal, stated a lot of it, so I might be repeating a couple of things. The first thing that I wanted to touch on is that our program offers a lot of flexibility to our students, and like Ms. McIntyre was saying, it's for our full-time students and the part-time students. Basically, these are the words that I hear from the students. I'm the only classified, well, me being the only classified person at the school, some of the students say, well, I come to IHI because I'm tired of the drama at the traditional schools. I'm tired of the bullying, like the one student said. I'm tired of the peer pressure. I'm tired of the drugs, especially with this Oxycontin problem that we're having, or oxy, whatever it's called, and the stereotypes. And so they say, I want to focus on my education, I want to get ahead, I want to graduate early. We had two juniors last year graduate a whole year early. And I can go on and on and on, but I'm just going to stop there on that part of it. The second part of it is that if our doors close, we will lose money, students, because right now, we field a lot of questions, answers towards online learning. There's a lot of charter online schools popping up all over nationwide. Kava, California Virtual Academy, Julian Charter School, Poway Online, I can't remember the other ones, but a lot of our students are looking elsewhere for their education. So if we don't keep them here, we will lose money, we will lose students. And basically, the bottom line is that our online school prepares our students for college learning. A third of the college classes are taught online, and that's really all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
The time the kids are in the K12 school.
My name is Joellen Archer, and I still reside in Catherine Nakamura's district. Tonight, I'm talking on the part of site techs. We are part of all areas of secondary schools, but our most important job is building the master schedule in the spring of every year, and then maintaining that master schedule for all changes that happen throughout the school year. So we are the ones who set up the course requests the students put in. This then tells the administrators how many CPUs they need. This does the budget. We also do the staffing needs this way. Without our input in building this master schedule, which means we literally put in every student's course and every teacher's assignments. Master schedule is needed for attendance-taking, ADA, if it isn't done correctly, ADA cannot be produced, student transcripts. Students, if they do not have the proper courses, will not graduate and go to the college they want. Textbook needs. And if the master schedule is not correct, we won't meet the Williams Act. So every year, I'm preparing all sorts of reports, so our sites meet the Williams Act. So we maintain the special, the master schedule, and this way, EL students are placed in the correct classes. They are in sheltered classes if they need. Special ed students get the correct classes for their IEP. Site techs are the go-to person, and I'd like the site techs in the office, the audience to raise their hand when they do some of this. I'm going to read rapid lists now. So we're the go-to person for QEI reports, KTEL reports, data director, Navions, CalPats, parent connect access, connect, ad messages, federal survey cards, WAS data, student password, grant application data, single plan for student achievement plan, lunch pen numbers, ASB requests, at-risk students, and I could go on and on, there's more. We are the data that we give to the administrators, who then use that to decide what professional development for the teachers that year. We give the data to the administrators when they meet with parents and students for success for students in their education. Thank you.
My name is Laura DeBell. My address is 3056 Renalp Street in San Diego. I'm the parent of two children attending San Diego Unified Schools since 2001. I'm here to speak to you today about the value and the importance of IHI Virtual Academy. My oldest son has been a full-time student at IHI for nearly two years now, and the school has been a godsend to us. My son was GATE identified and consistently tests in the proficient or advanced ranges, but was never able to succeed in the traditional classroom. Since moving to IHI during his sophomore year, he has made up courses he failed in traditional school, and successfully completed all courses to bring him back up to his proper grade level. He will graduate from IHI on time this June. This is something I questioned would happen just a few years ago. He has brought his cumulative GPA for high school up to 3.0, and even made the honor roll last spring. I couldn't be prouder of my son, but I have to give much of the credit to IHI, excuse me, to IHI Virtual Academy. Without the opportunity to learn in this alternative environment, I seriously doubt he would be graduating this year and looking forward to attending community college next year. I am sure that my son is not unique. There are plenty of kids that do not excel in traditional classrooms or schools, for one reason or another, and until recently, few alternatives were available. IHI is still a new school, and probably has not yet reached its peak cost efficiency. As a member of the school site council, I can attest to the fact that the staff there is diligent about finding the most economical ways to meet the needs of the students. Seems to me that online education offers many potential savings over traditional schools. No transportation costs, minimal facilities needs, and fewer textbooks and classroom supplies. It is very important that consideration is also given to the benefits that IHI provides to its 500 dual enrollment students each semester. Online education may well be the way of the future, as a supplement to traditional schools. I commend San Diego Unified and this school board for being a leader in education by providing this option to its students, and I implore you to let IHI Virtual Academy continue its good work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Diane McSweeney, 3230 Clermont Drive, San Diego. I'm a Title IV Resource Counselor for the district. I'd like to tell you about a student that I worked with last year. He's in high school. He was attending my insight group, which means he was caught using alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs. He was supposed to go to a party over the weekend. When I asked, he said, oh, he wasn't sure if he was going to go, there might be marijuana there, and he was really making the commitment to stop. The following week, I asked, so did you go to the party? How was he? He said, he didn't go. There was marijuana, and I've really tried to keep that commitment. Said, wow, that's really hard to say no to your friends. No, I said no to my family. Said no to his uncles. And he's incredibly impressive and heroic, because he said no to family. He has not reoffended since, that was back in March, so as of today, he has not reoffended. I have facilitated 70 students in these groups. 82% of the students have not reoffended. That means the students are not being suspended, which means their attendance improves, which means that they actually are in class and they're learning more. If they're achieving in that class, they have the potential of taking AP classes, of complying with A through G requirements. A school counselor has the ability to hear the needs of his or her students discussing A through G requirements. He or she will see the full potential and the challenges. The school counselor will help the student get the assistance, credit recovery, support groups, outside counseling, colleges, I mean, it goes on and on, all the things that a counselor does, helping the child. Students need a counselor to meet their academic needs. Without a counselor, many students will have a very difficult time achieving their full potential. A little history lesson, Mr. Eugene Brooker was an advocate of mental health and counseling for children. Thank you for your time.
Okay, I'd like to call up Lorena Lopez-Powers, Sharon Carr, Candy Nieto, and John Spiegel.
Hello and good evening. My name is Lorena Lopez-Powers, and my residence is on file, my mailing address and all. And at this time, I'd like to acknowledge some of the other parents and supporters that are here for the GATE program. I know that there were a number of emails and phone calls going on. I know that there were a number of emails and phone calls going around for a number of days and so forth, just to be here to send this very unique, but not very special message, since it simply comes to this, we are concerned for our students, for our communities. I personally have a daughter, Isabella, in the seminar program. We came from a private school into the public school district. We also have a younger daughter at an IP program that is service offered to us through our neighborhood school, our Bernie. And basically, we learned of all these considerations to cut the GATE program, the Advanced Placement Action Plans and the cohorts that work with these very special students. And I have to ask for you to consider those special students that are out there. They raise the scores for the schools. They bring and create a quality of work that is unique, but also very much part of their lives, and it will be a part of their lives, hopefully here in the school district and in San Diego. My husband and I are personally considering putting our kids back into private schools, and I think that's what's going to happen. For those parents like us that can afford to consider private schools, charter schools and so forth, we will move back. But on a personal note, again, I have a gifted child, and I see the benefits of the seminar program and what it has provided for her. I talk to people that are informed and people that can provide responses or consider recommendations to me, and that has been extremely, extremely important. And I'd just like to finish again with a number of families that I've met through this program and the number of families that are willing to go out and support and do as much as they can. So we're here to petition, to ask for your consideration, deeply consideration, as you make these decisions, and that you don't send us back to their private school system, because unfortunately, as I said, some of us do have an option, and that will be the case for a number of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Sharon Carr, and I'm the principal of Audubon K-8 School, and my address is on file. First of all, I just want to acknowledge the really tough job that you all have, and thank you for being here to make the decisions and for listening to us. I want to talk just a little bit about the K-8 schools and the challenge about the cutting one of the two extra CPUs from the schools. It is very important that when we are offering education to our children, to our students, that we provide the essential components that we need to. And in this situation, it means the standard core curriculum to those middle school children. We're not asking for extra, we're asking for basic necessities. So let me just tell you a little bit about what that means at Audubon, where we have over 140 and some middle school students. What that means is six teachers. Four of those are based on enrollment. The other two are plus-two CPUs. And what that means is that we have three to five levels of English classes, three levels of social studies, three levels of science, four to five levels of math, one to two levels of world language, and then other electives for six teachers. That's plus-two. Four would be basic, two are plus-two. That doesn't include music, it doesn't include PE. And these are some of the things that those six people provide. These six people provide clubs, tutoring, all the activities, like promotion for them when they move on to high school. All the extras those six people provide. They provide opportunities, they provide connections for our children. These six people even still provide little flexibility for our middle school, for our K-8 school. Ooh, I'm sorry. Let me just tell you one thing, just real quickly, about one student. Just an example of what we're doing at Audubon and at the K-8 schools. We have had an eighth grader last year who came to our school. It was her first year at the school, but she moved into our residential area. This girl came, and I could tell by the look on her face, wow, we're going to have a challenge. The teachers, we talked about her. We knew we had a challenge on our hands, both behavior and academically. Well, I call her Nicole after my daughter. As time went by, she started changing. She was making connections to the staff at that school, because the staff knows our children. By name, we know them. As time went on, she no longer looked like she was a challenge. At the end of the school year, this young lady in eighth grade getting ready to be promoted on to high school was just like she had been in the school for the whole nine or 10 years. She was a princess at the school, in the office, waiting to spend as much time as she could with the adults who had been in her life, guiding her life through that school year at a new school for her. When we got our CST results, and thank you for bearing with me, when we got our CST results, this young lady went from basic to proficient and advanced. I'll show you the scores anytime you want to look at it. She is, what is that? It is a success story on the K-8 campus, because we are going with bare bones, but six teachers provided that to her.
Thanks, Jen.
Thank you.
Thanks very much, yep.
Again, I am here to speak on behalf of the CEBET program. We didn't inundate you with emails. I didn't fill the audience with parents like we did in June. But again, I am here to speak on behalf of the CEBET program. When I looked at your conform, your community-based school reform model, one of the pillars talks about parent engagement. Our program engages parents not only in learning themselves, but becoming tutors to children in school. So I think it's a very valuable service. We were cut over $430,000 last year. Some of you spoke, Mr. Evans, about this was a program you had envisioned for parents on models, on learning English and helping children. You know about a success with tutoring. Just last week, we had a resource teacher who was testing first graders that came out of our class last year, and their reading and writing scores were higher. And she went back to the teacher and said, "Why are these kids' scores higher?" And the only thing she could attest to is that they were being tutored once a week. And so I would ask again to consider not eliminating our program. I know we're in flexible status for a couple more years, but we would not be able to reconstitute. And just FYI, the FTE information is incorrect. We were reduced. Some of the numbers were still in place in September, because the reductions were so late in the year. So the FTE that really would be is 2.56. So again, I would ask you to consider keeping the CEBET program. Thank you.
Thanks, thanks, Ken.
John.
I couldn't remember if I was fourth or fifth.
Yeah.
Good evening. My name is John Spiegel. I'm the principal at Bethune K-8 School, and I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of our K-8 schools. We're kind of a unique breed, because we're not an elementary school and we're not a secondary school, so what are we? And I know that that is part of the decision process in thinking of, how do we staff them? And I'm here tonight because I'm concerned about the fact that when I look at the budget cuts, there's actually two areas that we're getting dinged. We're getting a reduction in Section D around the site operations of having to make a cut, and I understand that that's there, and I grieve that, because each of the positions that potentially we're talking about are like an organ in the body that affect every aspect of why the parents in my school and the students in my school are there. On top of it, under a totally different section, there is a district-wide option of removing a CPU from the K-8 schools as well. That's not a district option, that's affecting me and my school. It might be a 10% cut up in Section D, but when you take into account a whole other FTE, we're talking about a lot more than that. And each of those cuts impacts one of the organs of the body of my school. I would urge you to consider thinking, what is a K-8 school, and how do we fund them appropriately? Because what is here is going to harm our schools, and it's going to harm our students. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Okay, Rachel Solenberger, Derek Solenberger, Dennis Gildahouse, and Gary Blevins.
Good evening, board members. My name is Rachel Solenberger. I live at 10328 Camanita Surabaya in San Diego, 92131. My son is a senior in high school, and he is dual-enrolled at I-Hi Virtual Academy and Scripps Ranch High School. Quite simply, I-Hi Virtual Academy fulfills your mission statement to my son. He's going to graduate from high school next year. We couldn't say that two years ago. Traditional school at Scripps wasn't working for him. He's a bright kid, wasn't working. We found I-Hi, and with the flexibility of the dual enrollment, he's made up classes, he's doing well, he's going to go to college. I know that there are many, many more students in this school system that would benefit from the flexibility of I-Hi. It's excellent teachers, it's an innovative program, it fulfills the requirements that he needs, it gives him a place to excel. So I am requesting that you please do not cut funding to I-Hi. You have, you know, there are considerations for other kids with special needs, for the GATE programs and things like that, which I totally respect, but there are many, many more kids like my son that don't do well in a traditional environment. I-Hi fulfills that need, he gets the support he needs. It's just, it's an excellent program, and I really request that you do not cut funding to I-Hi. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Derek Solenberger. I'm a senior at I-Hi, and I can honestly say that years ago, graduating from high school wasn't an option for me, and I-Hi has given me the tools and basically kind of saved me. And a large, I did work hard and I did put effort into school, but it just wasn't working, and a large thanks and a large amount of gratitude goes out to I-Hi. So I'm not making any demands, but I'm asking, please consider keeping I-Hi. Thank you.
Thanks.
Hello, my name is Dennis Gildahouse. I'm a physical education teacher at Pacific Beach Middle School here in the district. I'm also a resident in LA Gardens, who will have a four-year-old son entering possibly the school district next fall. I'm here on behalf of the possible cuts to the PE, health, and athletics in the budget. Just to let you know, I'm also the middle school intramural coordinator for the district, something maybe a lot of people don't even realize that goes on, but the vision of Bruce Ward and what he's done the last five years has been incredible. For instance, last Saturday at Wagon High Middle School, we had 81 games of flag football played in four hours between middle school boys from all around the district. This is something that's common. December 4th, we have a flag football carnival for the girls in middle school here in our district. In March, we run a basketball carnival that 132 games will be played in one day, one Saturday for the girls, and the following Saturday, the same amount of games will be played for the boys. We also have a soccer intramural league that starts in January and goes every Saturday through near the end of school in June. This would not happen without the vision of Bruce Ward. These are up to 1,000 students in this district, many who don't get the opportunity because of funds to play. This is a free event for these students. Would not happen without the vision and the effort of Bruce Ward. So I wanted you to be aware of the effect that that might have in our middle school students who, you know, with grade requirements that they need to have. It's a big plus for them to be at school. It gives them a big, a good reason to want to be at school because of these programs. I also wanted to talk about Brenna Behringer, the physical education resource teacher. In 2003, I was the elementary runner-up for District Teacher of the Year. 2006, I was the middle school semifinalist or District Teacher of the Year. Today, I am a better teacher than I was in 2003 and 2006 because of the work, the help, and the support of Brenna Behringer. She has made me a better teacher with her guidance and her support on teaching to the standards and the assessment and reaching my students in the ways that I need to reach them. So anyway, thank you for your time. I appreciate all the work that you have to do. I wouldn't want to be in your seat, and I think for the amount of compensation that you get for the amount of work that you have to do is not sufficient. So have a good evening.
Thanks.
Thanks for letting me speak to you. My name is Gary Blevins. I'm the head football coach at Miramesa High School. I've been a district employee for 32 years, product of the San Diego Unified, John Adams, Woodrow Wilson, and Hoover High School. You know, we don't even call it the Ed Center, we call it Bruce Ward's office. We call this guy five times a week. We had CIF/CD meetings, he gets us the fourth seed, have a 5-5 record in Division One football. You want to come out in two weeks? We'll play you the Grossmont, or the winner of San Diego High School, who's also in the playoffs, 12 seed. We don't survive without the support from the Ed Center. And if you think that they can do it at the site, you're wrong, because they would tell us to call Bruce Ward. It won't work. Now, you got, I'm responsible for about 350 kids, 150 kids in that team in my PE classes. We couldn't do the fitness gram, we couldn't run athletics. At some schools, you got an old person like me that can retire. You know, maybe John DeBeck will come out and help us. But the rest of these young people walk on coaches. You couldn't even figure out how to recertify the helmets. I mean, it's so much that he does, and that department does with two secretaries. You've already cut it to the bone, there's not much left. We've got to have that. We do not survive without that support from the Ed Center. Somebody should walk in his, I call Bruce probably three or four times a week. Well, who do you go to if you've got a problem with another school? You've got some schools that are just suffering, and they're trying to survive. That will be the coffin nail on them. They'll drop their programs. And I'll tell you what, the kids from the upper areas, this lady mentioned, same thing. They're going to flood out of here. They're going to go up to Cathedral, they're going to go wherever else they can go to put their kid in a chance to be in a winning situation. And you can't, you just, you really got to think about that. I know he's been stuck down there in that bottom office down there, maybe people don't know what he's doing down there. Those people are working hard. We do not survive. We want you to understand that. Physical education, athletics, the middle school, the elementary, we've got one person, we've got Bruce Ward, and a couple secretaries, and you can't cut that. It's, you've already done as much as you can. Sorry about the situation you folks are in.
We got him up to the second floor, but...
All right, Heather Mafia, Nancy Dill, Monica Gardner, and Tommy Flanagan.
Good evening. My name's Heather Redding Mafiaoli. I'm a resident at Tierra Santa, and my address is on file. I come to bring a certain perspective to the issue with the GATE cuts. I am the daughter of one, a student who was in one of the very first seminar classes in San Diego Unified at Alice Bernie. I am myself an alumni of the GATE seminar program with San Diego Unified, and currently a parent of a GATE-identified child. I also am a 15-year teacher of GATE students in southeast San Diego. And so I really want to impress upon you the necessity for us to continue the universal testing at second grade. That testing sets us apart from every other district in our area. We have a commitment to every child, to give them the opportunity to take that test and show what they can do, because it provides them so much enrichment in the classroom. When we adopted the Raven test and we agreed to test every child, we were looking, we gave the commitment to our low socioeconomic students and our second language students that we would not handpick kids that were worthy of being tested, as they do in some districts. We believe that every child had the possibility to show what they could do in the classroom. And I understand that we're looking down a dark tunnel, but we know, because we've been in this district for a long, long time, 20 years on my part, that eventually, there will be light, eventually. And if we disseminate the program, if we do away with it, there will be nothing to put back together. We must be able to find some way to continue the identification of students and continue the certification of teachers, so that we can put the program back together when this madness is over. And I understand that things have to be cut. I've gone from 23 students to 36 students in my classroom, so I see where the cuts are, and I know that there is no right answer to this. But if we don't maintain a minimum amount of the GATE program to where we are able to test everyone, there will be nothing left. Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
My name is Nancy Mansfield Dill. My address is on file. My son is a sixth-grade seminar student at Roosevelt Middle School. For years, I entered him into the lottery to get into the high-tech system. Finally, this year, his number was called. And at the 11th hour, I realized they have no seminar, no GATE, no nothing. So I reluctantly agreed to let him go to Roosevelt, which he wanted to do, because it's a neighborhood school. I had no choice, because without the GATE department, my son, who has ADHD and several other mental and learning issues, doesn't do well in a regular class. He's nothing more than a bored... He's nothing more than a bored, tired, unhappy, chatty, bouncy, class tutor. He never reaches his potential, he just stagnates, does nothing, except maybe get in trouble in class. If my neighborhood school cannot provide my son with an appropriate, and by that I mean the gate seminar program, an appropriate, challenging education, I don't think I have any other choice than to get him into the charter system, scrape some money together, and get him into a private school, something, because going back to what it was, it's not going to work. Before the gate program, my son didn't even like going to school. He's a straight A seminar student, and he hated school before third grade. In kindergarten, they didn't know what to do with him, so they had him coming in two hours a day. That's not acceptable. You've got to try to keep this. Please reconsider.
Thanks.
Hi, my name is Monika Gardner. I live at 1344 Granada Avenue. I'm a parent of a gate seminar student, and I am also a teacher of seminar at McKinley Elementary. I'm asking you to please consider not eliminating the seminar program. Raising class size will eliminate the seminar program at my school site, so that is not an option. If you raise the class size, it is gone. I need to remind you that highly gifted students have special needs, that they need to be in a class with their peers, they need to be with a teacher who understands the social and emotional needs, as well as acceleration and challenge in the classroom. I feel that highly gifted students have the same right to a free and appropriate public education as every other student in this district. We spend so little money on the highly gifted students, and seminar teachers are paid to teach 25 students as opposed to 32, the difference being six or seven students. That cannot be a huge amount of money. I also want to remind you that I believe the special education was lined off on tonight's budget, because somebody made the comment that we don't know how to provide adequate services and cut anymore. Well, you're not going to provide adequate services to seminar students if you cut this program. They are highly gifted, other states give them IEPs in order to ensure their rights, and these students, nobody would argue that students with special needs should have their program completely cut. That is what you are doing if you vote to eliminate seminar. Thank you.
Tommy Flanagan, 9949, Rio San Diego Drive, apartment 7092108. I am the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade history teacher at Bethune K8. On the topic of minus-one FTEs for the K8s, I currently have 256 students on my roster, 256. Bethune, I'm told, is the largest K8 in the district. What we really should be doing is adding an FTE rather than cutting. Despite this, we are the best, have the best API in all of Area 4, which is a testament to our wonderful Bethune students, parents, our principal, Mr. Spiegel, and our hard-working teachers. In the last two years, we have lost four teachers and two office staff. Everyone in this district, yourselves included, is on overload. We also, being a K8, have unique needs, we are two schools within one. We really need all 200 of our counselors, and in addition, the K8s could use an additional counselor, one for the elementary, one for the middle. We need our librarians, our OSL program as well. Having worked for five years at the fifth grade program, I can say that the sixth grade program is truly a rite of passage. I'd hate to see fourth and fifth go, but if anything, please save sixth. I thank you for your time, and if I could just add one other thing. Mr. DeBeck, as a teacher and a union man, often I agree, often I disagree, but I always respect you. Thank you for your service to the community.
Okay, thank you to all the public speakers. So we've got a staff recommendation to adopt the entire list for purposes of the first interim report to the county. Again, I think the superintendent was clear that we are not balancing a budget at this time, we're not making budget decisions. That'll come over the course of the spring, and we'll do our final budget in the middle of June. But tonight, we need to move forward so that we can get a first interim report into the county, as is required. So let me first ask for a motion, if there is a motion, to adopt these staff recommendations.
Based on the fact that this is not a final budget and that it's meeting requirement of the county, I move that we approve as recommended of staff.
Okay. And do we have a second? I will second that motion. Okay, discussion, board members. Yeah, Mr. DeBeck?
Well, you know, I've already told you where I am on this, but I have to look at the report we got, and on page seven, there's a statement that I really, really have to point out, has a lot of flaws in it. It says, "Area superintendents will work with principals within the cluster to determine reductions." And then it follows, "Schools will take advantage of sharing resources across the cluster." That cannot happen unless you pool the cluster budgets in the first place. It can't happen. There have been times when cluster meetings have occurred, where people have talked about sharing resources, and what sharing resources means is one principal gives up something for the good of the cluster. They won't do it, not until there's a cluster budget. That's a fact. Now, you know, watch it. If you watch this and you say that this is going to happen, I'll say, well, I'll be watching from afar, but I'll still be watching, and I bet you, you don't see any cluster, you know, sharing of budgets. You won't see it unless you put that out as a unit of budgeting. If you say principals will give up their stuff for another school, you're completely wrong. It's not their nature, and they won't do it. Now, on occasion, you'll find somebody saying, well, I got a half a teacher, and if you give up a half a teacher, we can share some resource. That's not the same. You really have to have a plan for that cluster. And until you have clustered leadership, that includes the parents and the people that are the beneficiaries of the product of the cluster work, which are the parents who actually have their kids in the schools, you're going to have self-serving as you do in this budget. Because I noticed another thing, and this is the last, maybe not. But if you look at all the recommendations, especially the one that's, I think, the most ironic of all, is that very specific that they want the sites to make cuts, but you don't find any central, specific cuts being offered. For example, I don't see any cuts of any departments like lobbying or public information, but are those programs for kids? Okay? You know, so sometime down this next route, which I won't want to be participating in, and frankly, I'm sorry about that, because I think I have some contributions yet, but I honestly see that when you start saying you're going to cut OSL, or cut gate, or cut whatever, and you leave intact a whole bunch of people who made those same recommendations to save their butts, I think you're totally off-base, you know?
Thank you, and thank you for those that spoke tonight. Thank you, staff, for, I know you've been working very hard to bring these items forward. Community members that came forth, I want to thank you, the ones that have been calling and leaving messages, thank you as well for your suggestions. The teachers and the principals that spoke tonight, I want to thank you for your courage to come up here and speak on behalf of your students. And I encourage you to speak, to educate the board, and I thank you for doing that. I will not be supporting this list going forward tonight, because it should include some things, and I have some recommendations. I don't have access to numbers, so I don't have the numbers, if these numbers are correct or not, but until I see these things listed, I cannot support this. Where we have line number 21, cutting the school police in half, I said, replace that with combining HR and finance. Could HR in half, finance in half, you should have enough there to sustain the police services. Landscapers, whether they're reducing the landscapers, 10, I said if you cut the zone managers that are sitting over in PPO, that can preserve the landscapers. We need our schools looking good, the principals can manage the landscapers. And these aren't all my suggestions, those that are big suggestions, you know, I give you props for submitting them to me as well. When it comes down under Area D, they say eliminating at least three-quarters of the accountability office would help reduce the number of allocations for our clerks and vice-principals and librarians. Under item E, replace the K8 reductions with the demographicers, demographers office. If you take that office away, you will have enough to actually leave a CPU at those K8 schools. These and other recommendations were made by people that are saying they don't see where the people that are making these decisions are at least listed in these areas. We know that this is a first reading, we know that things are going to change, but what we do need to make sure that we give the appearance that the people that are making decisions are willing to make cuts themselves. And those were just a few examples, I didn't mention all of them, and I apologize for those who gave me others, but I will share those with superintendent and staff as we close out this meeting, so that we can make sure that those items are listed. But I will not be voting for this tonight as it is written. Thank you.
If I may add one that I forgot. I do want to add one I've forgotten, and it's not on the list, too. There is huge amount of savings that can be reached this year only, this year only, by killing year-round ed.
Exactly.
It's not on the list.
Can we mention that?
Nobody's even told us how much it could save, but it's lots. We're talking millions.
And it was thought to the staff.
There is a cost in conversion. We knew that when we did it, and that was a warning was given to us when we went to year-round ed. But we really need to get off that if we're going to save money. It's going to be in the right year to do it, because of the furlough.
Exactly. And sales notified of that as well.
Anyway, that's just one more thing. But it's not on the list. So how can you vote for staff when everything's not open?
You know, this is, you know, my essentially eighth year of doing this, and, you know, it's the same arguments over and over and over again. But, you know, I'm going to push back. The lobbying office that everyone's cheering to eliminate saved us $18 million alone this year, actually far more than that. But my personal involvement in working with our lobbying office was $18 million. So if you want to, you know, cut off your arm, you know, go ahead and cut that. You know, I'm very concerned about gate, and I'm not sure that the savings are there. I think that's something, seminars definitely qualifies as something that once it's gone, it's unique to San Diego, and it was initially introduced to help at-risk kids. I think we lose a lot of people. The parent that came forward and talked about Hail, having once been, you know, part of this district, Hail is now a private school, and I think that can happen. I'm not happy, I don't find any of this, any of this palatable. If we could shut down year-round school and that would save us money, I know Jeravec Elementary School would have been a regular, traditional elementary school a long time ago. It's actually very expensive to stop year-round schools, because you have to continue to teach, pay the teachers. It's not, you know, people that stand up here and tell you simplistic things in order to save your programs are not doing you any favors. I think that what we're facing in the state of California is going to be a realignment of education, and so there's going to be some changes in how, we're already seeing changes in how education is being delivered, as we saw with IHI, with some success. But I think that we're going to be seeing some fundamental changes in education, and yet there is only so much that you can change. As our students actually become more disengaged because of computers, I find the teacher in the classroom to be more important as part of the socialization project for, you know, process of helping our students. Counselors are still, you know, are tremendously important as well. But for, but for right here and right now, I think that we have gone over the budget over and over again. I'd like to see, you know, gate, you know, seminar protected. I think that ultimately that that will happen. Katie Anderson, Katie Anderson's comments frequently about the budget, you should take those very, very seriously about what, you know, her analysis is on what gate actually costs this district. But I think furthermore, we're going to, going forward, this district is going to have to evaluate what closing down gate costs us, not only in loss of pupils who will no longer be attending this school district, and I can pretty much guarantee they won't. You know, I know what that program means to parents, but also in the loss of what it means for other students' education when those students are no longer in the schools, that that, I think, you know, we talk about all boats rising, I think that lowers the boat for a lot of people, too. So, you know, I'm very hesitant. I do agree with Mr. DeBeck regarding the contract, and I have been on, you know, record as saying that the contract needs to be opened up again, and there needs to be negotiations. Step and column needs to be examined until this budget crisis is over. Unless gas prices go up a whole lot, and we're all paying a lot more for gas, and those taxes come back into the school districts and education, it's, you know, it's going to be a rough couple of years. It's going to be very difficult. We're going to have to hunker down and figure out how to do this and still do it well. Our children deserve that. But it's going to be, you know, I think Governor Schwarzenegger gave us a budget that was smoke and mirrors, and anyone who seriously examined that over the last two years could see through that farce. But now, that has come home to roost, and, you know, we're going to have a real budget proposition. Several of the propositions have helped us, and several of the propositions have hurt us. You know, I'm not sure that people watching or even sitting in this audience with us right now truly understand, you know, the impact. Obviously, we know of being able to do pass a budget of 50%. Hopefully, that will be huge for education, that we will get a budget that is passed. That is, that's a game changer. But we have a game changer on the other side, with the proposition that no longer allows borrowing against local governments. That hurts us in public education. So where all this is going to be figured out, I'm not sure, but sitting up in this chair, making these decisions, I know that the staff in the Ed Center has worked very hard and has thought very diligently about this, but we do still need people that are going to help us with this, and that are going to work through this process. It's a billion-dollar corporation, spread out over 200 square miles. This is not your elementary school, your middle school, and your high school. It's a very important going concern, and it's important that we continue to deliver the services for our children. And it's not always as transparent as just saying, give me mine. As I said, lobbying, everybody wants to kill lobbyists. Our lobbyists, millions of millions upon millions of dollars has brought into this district. So, you know, I'm going to support this budget with a very heavy heart and have confidence in the fact that I believe that the gate department, I know that the person coming back into this chair is on record as being a very strong supporter of gate. I expect Katie Anderson will hold him to that, and I expect that, you know, I know that, you know, members up here of the board that also support it, and I believe Mr. Barnett also supports it. So there are a number of things that I don't agree with this on, but I do know that we have to submit an interim report. Staff has to develop those, that interim report. They need to move forward in order to give clarity, which has its own role and importance in the governance of any jurisdiction. You know, I'm going to support this, but it's not with any idea that we are doing the right thing. California only supports 37% of total tax receipts go to education. I've said this repeatedly. You know, when you look at other states, there's all kinds of games that people play with money, and you're this fund and that fund. But looking at total tax receipts, we're not doing right. And yes, there is a lawsuit with the PTA and the California School Boards Association, you know, bringing a lawsuit against the state of California, because we are not fulfilling. This is a landmark case, it's going to take several years for it to shake out. Takes a long time to go through the court system, but there is in fact a lawsuit, and we should have a lawsuit. This is not acceptable, and having made the decisions over and over again, it's not right for us, it's not fair to us, it is ultimately absolutely unfair to our... It is ultimately absolutely unfair to our, the people who work every single day in our schools, and ultimately, it is unfair to our students. So there's my take on this. And I'm going to vote to support this budget, but, you know, I know that this is not a complete answer.
Well, as I said at the last meeting, I very strongly object to this entire list of cuts. I do not believe it is reasonable to operate our schools without counselors protecting the mental health of our children. But hold on. Without nurses protecting their physical health, without paying attention to the very special needs of our students at the high end of the academic spectrum, at the low end of the academic spectrum, paying attention to the safety of our students. When Mr. Barrera and I came on the board a couple of years ago and we were facing the first cuts, we were more than happy to look at what was going on at the district level and the central office and so forth. And we said, you know, "Well, we have a budget crisis. We're just going to decimate the bureaucracy and pay attention to the teachers or in the classroom and what's going on at the schools." And we began to do that. And just a couple of weeks ago, I was going with Mr. Reinderson, walking through one of the wings upstairs that had been packed with people, and now they were carting away and taking away desks and so forth, a vast number of people that had been removed from the offices, either their jobs eliminated or they were sent out to the school sites where they were needed. So there is a lot that we've done in that regard. Unfortunately, as they say, cut and then cut and then cut some more, it eventually affects the kids in the classroom. Here's the situation. The state of California and our current system, of which we're all apart, puts us in this rather absurd position, as I said earlier, of saying, "Okay, we're not going to tell you what the budget is, but we want you to come up with a budget with a very limited amount of money." And we are required to go through this exercise. But we must not fall into the trap because it's very easy for the state to say, "Okay, you're going to have to cut," and then to get everyone here on the local level pitted against each other. So this program is against this program, this school is against this school. And the state kind of just sits back and folds their hands and says, "Well, you know, it's not our problem. We're going to make them fight over it." And these are programs that, you know, affect all the children. And I'm talking about the effect on the adults, which is also another factor. I do believe that there are some ideas that have been brought up that need to be looked at. I don't think that when we are approving this preliminary step, that this is saying this is the only things that we are going to look at. I think we need to continue lifting up every rock and looking underneath it. Right now, the kids that are going to graduate are in the third grade. When I first came on the board, they were in the first grade. And I do not apologize for the steps that we took during the last two years to make sure that they had a successful first grade, second grade, and third grade. We have to, unfortunately, when the state forces us to operate one year at a time, we have to protect our students and their education one year at a time, and we will continue to do that every year. The thing that happens when we're facing a crisis like this is we find out, which we should always know, of all the great things that are going on in our schools, including great PA systems. The great work that counselors are doing, the great work that's happening at I-Hi, all of the other various programs, we just hear wonderful stories about things that are going on. There is a, there are groups out there who are out to prove that public schools are failing. The reality is that we haven't been succeeding. Our performance has been going up every year. We are doing very well. But yes, if all the funds are taken away from the schools, it will be a self-fulfilling prophecy that in fact, the schools will fail. We can't say at this point, "We're going to make certain cuts and it's not going to hurt kids' education." We've already done it in certain steps by increasing some class sizes, by decreasing the number of days of school. All of these things are hurting our children's education. We're just going about it in a much more serious way at this point. We worked very hard for the last couple of months on Proposition J because I really did not want to look at cuts. I wanted to look at how we could increase our revenue. And we did succeed in getting a majority of San Diegans to support Proposition J. Unfortunately, in California, we have laws that do not allow the majority to rule. And so a minority was able to say, "No, we will not approve this local tax for our schools." This obviously would have made a huge difference in the cuts that we are facing right now. I mean, I'm even inclined to say, "Let's go ahead and without Proposition J passing, let's all of us go ahead and still contribute the 98 bucks throughout San Diego and save our public schools," or at least make a contribution towards that. I mean, that's $8 per household, that's $5 per apartment. I mean, that's what we were asking, and that was just one step. But we have to face the reality. We don't have that, so we have to look at what we can do now. And again, I think the whole issue here is we need to stay united. We must not fall into the trap of the divide and conquer trap that the state is setting us up for, where we are going to fight against each other. We need to say, "In California, we place a value on public education in San Diego, in Los Angeles, in San Francisco, and all the districts across the state," and unite and say, "We need to give number one priority in the state to public education." And we have a new governor, we have a new legislature, but they are responsible to us and we are responsible for what they do. So we really need to be united on that. Again, as Ms. Nakamura said, this is... I'll finish quickly. I think that's my buzzer. This is a preliminary step where we are required to do this. We are going to, starting tomorrow, day one, and the staff is going to be working on what are the possible solutions, and both in terms of what can we do, in terms of where is it reasonable to make cuts, and number two, what are the possibilities of getting increased revenues from the state?
Yeah, let me...
Yeah, I think one of my concerns, and maybe I'm interpreting this wrong, but the staff recommends that they implicitly, that we, they said if we approve this list, they implicitly direct the staff to begin implementation process to realize these deductions. And my concern is what I don't want to happen tomorrow morning is that they go to police services and start saying, "Make, sort of preparing to have half of your staff." I don't want them sending out notes to K-8 schools saying, "Make plans to have one less person." That is my concern because that's what this says. This says that if we approve this, item number two here says, "If we approve this," then they're going to start immediately with this list of things. Now, I am willing to say I would, you know, I know we have to turn this in, but what I'm willing to say is that if this says that the staff is going to go back and consider the things that have been given to them, because I know what Catherine just said, but we do know that because of having the furloughs, if we're going to go from traditional, we're going to traditional, this is the best time to go. It will cost us money, but in the long run, it will save us money. And that will bear out if we get the numbers to that. But what I can support is that by approving this, this is the list. So if it can be modified to say that the staff is going to go back and look at the things that I mentioned publicly and the other things that we have given the staff, then I'm willing to support this. But I'm not going to support it when they say, "This is the end-all, be-all." I can't do that.
Should we, do you want to suggest an amendment to the motion?
First, you have to vote the one down or else...
No, we don't. She's making a motion to amend the...
Well, it's in order.
Okay, well, I will, okay, I make an amendment that the staff will, they can submit this list for our interim report, but the staff will investigate the items that were given tonight, both publicly and in writing.
Okay. Can we get a second to Ms. Jackson's amendment?
I will second that, that they continue to investigate all options.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and I'd like to just add that I think that is in fact why we are voting tonight. One of the things that I don't think the public truly understands is when we go over and over and over again, what that does publicly is the wear and tear on the staff and their inability, in fact, to go back and do that work in their offices. You know, it's, this is in the interest of actually enabling them to do that work. But again...
Ms. Ward, do we need to, can we just vote on Ms. Jackson's amended motion?
Just on the amendment.
Vote on the amendment first, okay.
Just the amendment.
All in favor?
Just the amendment.
Yes.
It's just the amendment.
Okay. Now, we've got an amended motion with a second. Can we vote on that?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. That concludes the meeting. Thanks, everyone, for coming out.